May we have a...
Pleasant allegiance.
Sorry.
Shouldn't stand for it.
You should stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah.
The PR?
Yes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Budnick? Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here. We'll open up the meeting tonight with items, public discussion that are not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything this evening? Yes, please.
Okay. Ted Zachary from 68 Devonshire. Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and Council Commissioners. I have just a couple of things to mention about the Environmental Committee and Ridge Resi... Ridge Reci... Ridge Resale. Ridge Resale. It's really great to have that. I'm really pleased to have that. It's great. But sometimes we're not able to put our stuff out there to them. So one alternative is a place called Buy Nothing Ferndale. I highly recommend that. It's really great. It's... You'll have less things at the curb, which means our tax dollars will be less. As you know, I usually have a visual aid because I like to make my presentation memorable. Last time I was here, I think I was saying about the butternut squash that I made. I gave out seeds and stuff like that. The previous year, I had 119 pounds of my crop.
Wow.
This year, I thought I would have more, but I wasn't able to water it. I had 112 pounds. So it's still up there, and it's just a few plants. It's not a lot. So I have a sample.
Excellent.
The reason why I'm saying this is that you at home, you could do this too. You just have some seeds. And I have some seeds here, too. But you could have a butternut squash this size. Or if you water it well, you could have butternut squash like this.
Wow.
I think this is around five or six pounds. And when you think about it, you'll save a lot of money at the end of the year, or all year long. And my crop, it lasts till the middle of spring.
Wow.
So I give it to friends and neighbors, and it's great. And you know that saying, "Arby's has the meat"? Well, Ted Zachary has the seed. Okay, so when you watch, when you hear that on TV, "Arby's has the meat", you think of Ted Zachary having the seed.
We always will now.
So if you want some seeds, just contact me. So I like to make my presentations memorable. So here I am. Hope you remember. And any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A pleasure to be here.
Good to see you, Ted.
Good to see you, too. Take care.
All right, you, too.
Thank you.
So I have to follow that. I'm Deb Hemme from the library. So we are working on a library survey, a community survey of both of the communities that we serve. And we're looking for ideas, well, feedback on our current hours, our current services, our current collections, but also feedback on possibly having new collections like a seed library, which really isn't a library. You don't check it out and bring it back, obviously. It's like, can I borrow that pencil or that sandwich? You're gonna just eat it. So I hope you'll look for our survey and say that you'd love to see a seed library. And also, we're looking, one of the big things we're looking at is changing our hours to being open seven days a week, probably closing one hour earlier during the week, which is a real, it's our lowest, our lowest patron traffic time. So those are the things we're looking at. That should be out in January. I will work with Shawnee and whoever else I need to, to get it in the hands of people in Pleasant Ridge. And I'm working with people, obviously, to get it in hands of Huntington Woods as well. The other thing, this, actually, she started in September, but I believe I've been remiss, and I have not been here since then. So we have a full-time children's librarian. You may have seen it in some of the publicity. But if I could just sing her praises, she is fantastic. She is a former reading specialist at the Southfield Schools. She lives in Huntington Woods, so she knows this area well. Her heart is here. She has two children in the Berkeley Schools. She has just done a fantastic job. This is the first time we've had a full-time children's librarian since, I think, well before, well, just since before the pandemic. So it's been, it's been a minute. She is doing the normal things that a children's librarian does, but she also has a, like a... It's a Burton Berry Book Club every afternoon from 3:30 to 4:00. Burton Berry is kind of specific to Burton, but it doesn't really matter. And she has free snacks, so anyone who wants to come from 3:30 to 4:00 can participate in that. She has a scavenger hunt always. There's always a, not a holiday theme, but a seasonal-themed library scavenger hunt for young kids, like toddlers, and then also for like middle-aged kids. They seem to like that. There's always themed coloring pages that are available. She has a STEAM program once a month on a Saturday. And we're trying to get some more teen programs and youth programs. So in January, she has a PSAT, a proctored PSAT test. And then a few days later, that following week, there'll be a program for parents and teens to go over the results of their test. The other thing, I just want to give a, it's kind of a heads up. I'll be here one more time before then. Yeah, I'll be here in February. We have been selected, so the library belongs to the library consort, or the library network, which is our 50 or 60 library consortium in Metro Detroit. And they have selected two libraries to host a three-week in-depth seminar called Conversations on Race. And the Huntington Woods Library has been selected as one of those two locations. The other one is Northville. So that will start March 8th, if that's a Monday. I had my notes, and I, of course, left them on my desk, so I'm going from memory. But the first Monday, or maybe it's the second Monday, anyway, in March. So it's a three-week program. Look for that. Talk it up. It's a really, really good program. It's sponsored by TLN. It's not sponsored by us. Is it the sixth? Is that the first?
Monday is, Monday, March 6th.
Okay, then let's go with the sixth. So that would be three weeks, and I don't remember how many they limit it to, but it's just a real good organization that's putting it on, and I hope that we'll have a wonderful attendance for it. And that is it from the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, I got your note about the minutes, and we're talking about what to do with them. Thank you. Yes, please.
Hello, everybody.
Hey.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm State Representative Helena Scott, for those of you that aren't aware. I just want to let you know that I took my oath of office today.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So officially, I will be your state rep as of January 1st. So I really wanted to come tonight just really to thank everybody for their support and for their vote, and also to thank your mayor for his endorsement, and also those on the council that supported me as well. I truly appreciate it. Just know that I will work very hard for you as your voice in Lansing. I do look forward to meeting with all of you all at the beginning of the year so that we can discuss some things as priorities and things that you want to see done in Lansing. Just also to give you a little bit of an update, I'm sure you're aware and maybe have heard that we are a majority now, thank goodness, in the House and the Senate, so that's an amazing thing. We also have a new Speaker of the House, which is Joe Tate. I currently am on the Committee of Committees. It helps to select the committees that our representatives will be on. So we'll be making that finalized selection come January. Currently, right now, I serve my current district on energy, communications, and technology and financial services. I'm looking also to do something similar to that next year as well, a little bit of a policy and also a PROPS. So I'll be happy to come back in January to let you know what that selection was. But I just wanted to come out tonight really to let you know that I truly, truly appreciate your support and your endorsement of me, and just know that I will work incredibly hard for you in Lansing. And just know that my office is an open door. I have with me tonight, as he always is, is my Chief of Staff, Greg Humphreys. On the occasions that Lansing runs late, because that does happen, and I do have commitments after session, I may not be able to make to every meeting, but somebody will be here, either be myself or Greg. So I just wanted you to know that you all are prioritizing me, and I really appreciate your vote and your support. And let's, let's do it.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you so much.
Was there anyone else this evening for items not on the agenda? All right, I guess we'll move on to governmental reports. You're up.
Good evening, all. Ferndale Fire Chief Robinson was unable to attend today due to prior commitments. She sends her regrets, but she wanted me to speak to a couple of things, so I said I would. She wanted to address with the colder weather, people, some people using space heaters, especially electric space heaters in their house. I think she had mentioned this before, but she wanted to reiterate it. Using space heaters, electric space heaters to supplement your heating. Never use an extension cord. Plug it directly into the outlet because it could overheat and cause fires, things like that, and with everything else in the home, Christmas trees, stuff like that. Whether you're using it in your garage, your basement, your home, plug it directly into an outlet. With that, with the Christmas season, a lot of lights, decorations, don't overload circuits or the power strip bars, things like that. If you're, have that on and you're blowing fuses or breakers or whatever, you've probably overloaded the circuit, which could cause a fire as well. She wanted to remind people of that, to try to properly plug things in with the right extension cords, things like that. Don't use like a two-prong if you're outside and everything, which we all have. Try to do the grounded thing, go, "Darn, it doesn't work." So then you do the plug thing, and it still doesn't work. Third thing was fireplaces, people using fireplaces with the colder weather and stuff. When you're removing your ashes, I said that correct, right, ashes. Use a steel bucket, not paper bag or anything like that, and then directly out of the home, not in your garage. Don't sort of, because they tend to not to always go out, and that could ignite and cause a fire. So those were the three things that she wanted me to address. And she also wanted to say, because she wouldn't be here, to wish everybody a happy and a safe holiday season. So on behalf of her, that was that. From the police perspective, again, holiday season, a lot of people are doing their shopping online, and they get a lot of package deliveries at home. We see them on the porch. We've all had it to our porch or the neighbor's porches, and you see packages piled up. It just screams for people to just drive by and want to take your stuff. Many delivery services offer the ability where you can dictate where you want those delivered to. We recommend the side door, the rear door. Have your neighbors grab them if you could. There's a lot of people out there that, with nefarious intentions, let's not make it easy for them with just the packages sitting on the porch. If you can get it delivered somewhere else or a time when you're home, or have your neighbors get it, we recommend that. As I was going through the logs for the last two months, we only had one report of packages being stolen, which I just found out from the officer that came in at midnight. It was the neighbor that took it and then returned them. He was doing them a favor. So we haven't had any, knock on wood. Other people in other cities are experiencing this. It is the season for that. So be aware of that. Also, if you're doing shopping, whether you're in a mall, a parking lot, in your driveway, at home, you're trying to hide packages from your spouse, your partner, your kids, and you leave them in the car, people are driving around and looking, and if they see these things in the back, they will break your window and take your packages. So try to put them in the trunk or truck area, cover them up. Let's not make it easy for them with that. Also, with the holiday season, be mindful of your personal information, credit cards, identity stuff online and everything. People are trying to get your info with the readers at brick-and-mortar stores or online. So beware of that. If you've been asked to do something more than one time or whatever online, it's probably not good. You should exit and then try to redo your transaction and stuff. Having said that, myself, starting to read, and all the other officers of the police department, want to extend a safe and a happy holiday season to everybody here and the residents that are watching, and everybody that passes through our town and everything, whether you celebrate Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, or whatever you celebrate, and to have a happy, healthy New Year in. We will see you next year, unless you have questions.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other governmental reports today?
I will give it since Commissioner Budnick's not here. Good evening, everybody. We do have a couple, well, let me start with the new edition of the Ridger will be out. So the January through March edition of the Ridger will be posted online first and then in mailboxes. So all this information will be on here. We do have a couple upcoming day trips. The biggest one is the Van Gogh trip going to the DIA. It's 73 pieces from all around the world that's coming to the DIA. Lots of people have already seen it. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 74 pieces from all around the world. We're gonna enjoy lunch, and it's supposed to be a really great time. I have not seen it yet, but lots of people have, and said it's an iconic trip. Graduating seniors, there are two scholarship opportunities, the PR Foundation and the PR Women's Club. All of the information, again, it's in the, in the Ridger, so please check that out because there are hard deadlines for that. The team, the swim team registration begins January 3rd. There is a hard deadline of that of March 30th. So please check out either the Pleasant Ridge, or the Pleasant Ridge Piranhas page or the swim team page at pleasantriderpiranas.com for more information. We'll have lots of information going on about that, what you'll get with the swim team fees, practice start dates. We will have a new coach this year. Coach Abby has decided to move on and spend more time with her family and kids in her classroom, so we're wishing her well, and we will miss her. Summer day camp registration begins April 3rd. That information's in there as well. We do have a tie-dye party that's happening February 1st, but the registration deadline is January 23rd. Spring soccer and youth baseball. It's funny that we're already talking these things. I know the first real snow hasn't happened yet, but we're already in the midst of the planning. That registration begins January 3rd. Again, the Ridger's gonna be posted online. We will Facebook that and put that all online. It'll be in mailboxes, too. The front desk will have limited holiday front desk hours. If you have your Wellness Center fab, lots of people I know will start exercising more in the New Year. So if you haven't used the Wellness Center in a long time, and you would like to start in the New Year or over the holiday break, just come in, see me and Greg during regular business hours. We'll make sure that it's in good working order, because we do have some holiday seasonal time off. But you can use that daily, 5:00 AM till midnight, if it's in good working order. So just make sure that you guys check, check to make sure it's in good working order, okay? And then, of course, from the rec center, we wish everybody a happy and holiday, safe holiday season, too.
Thanks, Shawnee. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for governmental reports. Let's move on to the liaison reports. Mr. Lenko.
Education. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick update, the millage that the bond we discussed last meeting has been postponed, delayed. So that's the most significant news out of the school. But again, I'll always plug the e-blast as well as the YouTube school board meetings. So that's all I got.
Awesome. Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Planning Commission and DDA, they did not meet in this past month, but they will, their next meeting will be January 23rd. The Planning Commission is going to have one position open in the New Year, and we'll be looking at that in March, I think. But it looks like the calendar for next year will be, for the meetings, which we'll talk about a little bit later, tentatively, it's going to be like January 23rd, April 24th, July 24th, and October 23rd for the Planning Commission and DDA meetings. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Schmier.
Thank you, Mayor. Historic. So this Saturday, the 17th, 10:00 AM to 12:00, the museum will be open. This will be your last time this year to see the Winter Village. It has been set up, I think, for the last seven years by Carol Boyd and Conrad Stack, and it's awesome. So if you have not seen it, this Saturday, 10 until 12, it's also a chance to check out your house folder, see the history of your house. Home tour, so our home tour is scheduled for this September 23rd. We are still looking for a few more houses, so if you are interested in learning more, please reach out to me or anyone on the Historic Commission. And also, we, too, will have some open seats. We'll have three open seats. So if you are interested, you can fill out an application online, in person at the city, and we will, we do have copies over at the Historic Museum also. Same is true for Planning DDA. You can, same application, you can get them at the same places. So please fill those out if you're interested, and we will be making those, we will be looking at those applications in March. And that is all I have, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. Typical monthly stuff, I suppose. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
I second.
Any comments? Could we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Schmier?
Oh, no, no, it's cool. Yes.
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 Yes, the motion carries. And now we'll move on to the conversation about the proposed amendment change to our ordinances around zoning.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a public hearing for a set of zoning ordinance amendments addressing a number of things. The City Commission passed a moratorium in August on drive-through uses. And this was, this was kind of highlighted for us by the Skymint Marijuana Facility application along Woodward. And as we considered that, the consideration of, you know, curb-side delivery or drive-through uses as part of that use, what impact would that have? It would amplify kind of the impact of that use on the community. So out of that, we passed a moratorium on drive-throughs to look at our zoning standards. Our zoning ordinance is silent on drive-throughs. It neither prohibits nor permits them, so we wanted to clarify that. As we were working through that amendment, another thing that was highlighted, and this came mostly out of the cycle track design process, was the impact of driveways onto Woodward and how the block from Maywood to Amherst, where the Comerica Bank and the Whistle Stop are, that cycle track design is pretty much compromised compared to the rest of the, the rest of the facility. When we're looking to do bike and pedestrian infrastructure, we're trying to do excellent bike and pedestrian infrastructure that's comfortable for all people to ride. That's, the issue right now is that you can ride your bike on the street, but how comfortable are you doing it? You know, bike lanes on Woodward can be uncomfortable, or they can be very comfortable, depending on how you design them. If you're riding your bike along the multi-use trails at a metro park, it's a very different experience than it is riding on, you know, Livernoy, where there's pretty good bike lanes versus somewhere like Northwestern Highway, where they painted some bike lanes next to the road. There's varying comfort levels, and if our goal is to have excellent bike and pedestrian infrastructure that's comfortable for anyone from age 6 to 90 to ride on, we should look at, we should look at the impact of driveways. That's a common access management standard that many communities have, spacing and location of driveways. And we'll get more into that in a second. We also have setback requirements. So in the commercial and office districts along Woodward, we are reducing the setback requirements. This is something that has been kind of on the back burner for some time, and now that there's a zoning amendment coming forward, we just included it to go through that process. And then also adding residential open, minimum open space standards that preserve the character of the community that we have. It won't create nonconformities. It's just meant to prevent people from paving over their entire yard. So we have two essentially, one, that's a conservative amendment to protect the character. The setback requirements is loosening standards along Woodward. The drive-through is self-evident. We're prohibiting drive-through uses. The driveways is probably the one that's most interesting to people. As I mentioned, many communities have access management standards. When you have a major thoroughfare, there's often a driveway spacing requirement. Here in Pleasant Ridge, we have frequent side streets and alley access for all properties. So we have a secondary access to all properties. We don't have a issue of access. It's really an issue of design and location. Most properties along Woodward, not all, but most have side street access. That is, they're a corner lot. We have a few mid-block properties on Woodward that don't, particularly south of Woodward Heights, but a few north of Woodward Heights, like Dr. George's parcel, does not have side street access, but most do. So most parcels have direct access to a side street, all have access to an alley. We have six properties that have driveways and 15 that don't. And this would seek to, over time, it doesn't require anyone to do anything immediately. It doesn't require anyone to do anything as long as the use continues as it has. Our Woodward properties are largely constrained by other factors, most notably parking. It makes it, our parking requirements make it almost impossible to expand or to change the building on most of our Woodward properties because most of them are non-conforming with respect to parking. Or they're conforming with respect to parking, but there's no room to expand or change the building. So the proposed amendment would require that the driveway be closed when a building is expanded, which in most cases is not likely because it's not possible under our current parking and other zoning standards. Or when the use of the building changes, so when it goes from office to something else, it would have to be closed at that time. Short of those, if it's a change of use from one retail business to another retail business, there's no requirement for that to change. One office to another office, no requirement for that to change, for anything to change. One thing we did get was, we got some comments about the impact of driveways or having to close an existing driveway diminishing the value of a property. And all zoning requirements have some impact on the value of a property. If you require one parking space for every 100 square feet or 300 square feet, you know, if you require more parking, that's more pavement, more parking area, smaller building. And that's a large diminishment of value, because most of the value, as we'll see, for the, for a property comes from the building, not the parking. So in order to just double-check, and I'm not saying that this is a, you know, an exact description of the value of land, but we have parcels that have driveways and we have parcels that don't. And so to just get an idea of, you know, do driveways increase value? Or is there a notable correlation between, you know, major drivers of value on a property? Let's look at the value of properties that have driveways versus those that don't. And the yellow lines are properties that have driveways. And we have parcels, most of our parcels are between a tenth and a half acre along Woodward. So to kind of normalize that, we just did value per acre. So it's the assessed value. And the assessed value is half the market value, as the assessor sees it. The assessed value is not limited or constrained. It changes based on market conditions every year. And the assessor goes through and revalues those every year. So it's different than taxable value, which we're not talking about that tonight. And then to normalize that, we just divide the value by the acreage of the parcel to get value per acre. That's a common number. So I think that, you know, this, I was interested to double-check whether or not this would be a major impediment or a diminishment of value on the property, something that was unreasonable. Based on this, I don't think it is unreasonable. I think we see that properties that have a driveway generally have lower values per acre. Part of this is because some of them are more automotive in nature. The Sunaco and the Oil Change are at the bottom. The Comerica has a large part of that property devoted to circulation and the drive-through around the building. And that space, it doesn't generate any value. There's no value in a parking space. There's no value in a driveway from an economic standpoint. It supports the business, of course, but it doesn't create value. That comes from the value of the building, which you're either leasing for rent or you are generating economic activity in. And then we see that, I think, the And then we see that, I think the interesting comparison is, if we look at somewhere like the Funeral Home, Wessels and Wilk versus the Ameriprise Building, those are two similarly sized parcels. They're non-retail uses, and one, of course, is a financial office and the other's a funeral home, so they bring people in, but it's not large volumes of people throughout the day. It's, it's somewhat similar, the, the buildings are somewhat similar in size. And we see that there's not a lot of difference in value between those two. And of course, Ameriprise does not have a driveway onto Main Street or Woodward, and the West, and the Funeral Home does. So this is, you know, this isn't determinative of value, I'm not saying that, you know, adopting this amendment is going to have no impact on property values, but I don't think it's going to have a, a major impact on property values. And we can talk about this more, and I'm sure that, you know, you can draw your own conclusions for this, and you may disagree with me, but I wanted to go through this exercise just to try to put some kind of, some data and some sort of grounding and, you know, ground truth on, on what, what the impact of this might be. So if there's any questions from the Commission, I'd be happy to answer those. I didn't really talk much about the drive-throughs or the residential open space, we talked about that last month, that, I got a couple of questions from residents, I told them that, you know, you are nowhere near the cap, you can, you know, you can build a very large patio and you'll be fine, and there hasn't been a lot-
You've been one of the people that asked.
You have been, yes. And the setback requirements, I can't see a lot of pushback on that either, because we're reducing the required setbacks, so you actually have more freedom to design and work on commercial and residential, or commercial and office properties. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, we would need to open a public hearing, get comment from the public, and then you can consider what to do next with the amendments.
Okay. So I think what we'll do is open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Please.
I, I disagree with all of what you've got there. Each, each property is as individual as each one of you are, and depending on, on its usage determines, you know, number one, the value, and then also the need for having the, the driveway on Woodward. And then the amendment also continues after that as to modification, and I don't understand what that means. If I modify, if I change something in the building or on the building, do I then stand a chance to lose my driveway? It's not a practical situation for my situation, where they would, how would they know to go around to the alley? Ameriprise, you, you drive up to the building, you see their parking lot is right there, it's, it's obvious. You close off my driveway, then how, how are they gonna know? We're gonna have signs and lit up arrows to go around the corner? And, and then am I gonna take funerals out an alley? I, I just find it, that this doesn't work, and not at all. And each property has to be taken on its own merit, and whether or not it needs those driveways or not. The, I agree with the drive-throughs, let's get rid of them, you know, don't, don't have them, but also the, adding all this stuff with the driveways, you, anybody that would buy any one of these properties and change the usage of it is going to have to come in front of this board. And you, you will have the last say on all of this stuff. So I, I think this is kind of overreaching and, and leaving an axe over our head, that we're gonna be afraid to do anything to our buildings to, to take care of them. I mean, with, you know, because then somebody can say, well, you've done, you've changed something, we're gonna close your driveway. And my driveway is crucial to my business, absolutely crucial. And, and then to lump me, as you did with the condos, it's, it's apples and oranges, it's not the same thing. You have a residence, and I have a retail business. To say that their property is worth more, and, and they don't have a driveway, and I have a driveway, mine's worth less, so therefore, if I don't have a driveway, my, my property's gonna be worth more? That logic doesn't follow, it absolutely doesn't follow. I say, get rid of the drive-throughs, but I would leave the rest of it out of there. I mean, I don't think it serves a purpose, whereas the fact that you folks have the ability to make, everybody's gonna have to present a site plan to you, and you're gonna have to determine whether or not they need, they don't need, and, and so on and so forth. So you, you're the governing body, you'll have the last say with anybody that comes into the city. I'm not going anywhere, but I, I just, I don't, I don't like the overreach of this whole thing. And, thank you.
Thank you, just for the record, your name and address.
John, Will, Wessels and Wilk Funeral Home.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that had a, please?
George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park, former City Commissioner, friend and neighbor of John Wilk, and I'm speaking in support of him. I'm also a client of Ameriprise as well, probably hit their parking lot five times a year, and John has supported my family twice in recent years for memorial services, and really, I hope that he's in full retirement by the time I need his services again. But, short, short story long, the, the circumstances of his business are very different from the other retailers on Woodward. I understand fully that the drive-through situation with Sky Mint or, good gosh, a taco place are things that are not conducive to what Pleasant Ridge does, but the drive-throughs at a funeral home are, what, once, twice a month? And if you can imagine, I understand that part of this was precipitated by the fact that the bike lanes are gonna move to the alleys outside the businesses on the east side of Woodward. If you redirected, imagine this, a funeral procession through the bike lanes, in the alleys, along Woodward, that would be, dare I say, ludicrous. So an ordinance like this would almost compel John to sell his business to a condo, to a financial planner, unless you want to become a financial planner, I don't know. Other businesses have other needs for driveways, but Wessels and Wilk has been a fine, upstanding business in the city for, before I came to the city in 83. And I don't think we should do this to businesses that have caused no harm, that are part of the character of our business. And then in terms of the exceptions that you might cite to the rule, like, you know, unless the business changes, you don't have to worry about it? Well, good gosh, Brett, Mayor, you know that in order to stay current, auto dealerships have to reface upscale regularly. If, if this funeral home wanted to double their business, amen to them, but it would take substantial investment, and it would be good for the city, and it would trigger the ordinance that we're talking about. I know from my past experience on the City Commission that this commission is reluctant to issue zoning variances because of the precedent it might set, but let's not worry about the precedent it might set, let's set an, set an ordinance that says a low-drive-through volume business shouldn't be impacted by this law. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were there any other comments?
Hello? Good evening. My name's Scott Galloway, I live at 154 Maplefield, and I'm an occasional bicycle commuter to my office in Huntington Woods, oftentimes drive up Woodward Avenue on my bike, and would attest to the value of having fewer interactions with driveways and, and cars pulling out in front of me. I had a situation where, you know, my next-door neighbor's daughter ran into a car. The car didn't run into her, but she ran into the car as it, as it pulled out onto Woodward, on Woodward Heights. So I think there's some real benefit, and I think one of the greatest ways that a community can enhance the value, the quality of life of its residents is through gradual changes in the built environment, things that don't directly impact current owners or users of property. But when the ownership changes or the use changes, so too does the requirements for the property. So it seems to me that the ordinance changes are thoughtfully crafted, and the idea that it'll reduce value may be accurate, I don't know, evidence would seem to suggest that's not a clear cut, but the, that seems to be offset by the expansion of the buildable envelope on each property, that the reduced setbacks and the, you know, greater space that you can occupy with a building is. So I think that it would be nice if Pleasant Ridge sort of joined our neighbors in Berkeley and Ferndale in the state of Michigan with a very complete streets mindset, and I would love to see a greater bicycle infrastructure in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other comments? Please.
Sherry Sadler, 3 Woodward Heights. I feel like beating a dead horse, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we shut down driveways on, from Woodward and we're pushing all the traffic down the alleyways, where is it gonna go? Woodward Heights. So what was the purpose in this whole traffic study, when now we did all that, and we say we're gonna make these changes, and then we put in this, what do we call them? An amendment? Ordinance? That we're gonna now shove traffic down the alleyway, emptying onto side streets, that was just mentioned. So I just want, for the record, to be heard again, I, I'm very confused why we would do all that and then do something to cause increased traffic again.
Close the marijuana?
By, well, that's what I'm saying, that, that's gonna be a business that doesn't have a driveway off of Woodward. If it's going in that same spot, and it's a new change of use, it's not gonna have a driveway. And when we started talking about the marijuana, which I don't want to go down that road right now, if you remember, we were told at first that they would not even be able to enter the alleyway, and then the attorney said you can't close the alleyway off too, everybody has to have access to the alleyway. So now here we are again, and if they aren't even gonna be able to enter or exit off of Woodward, all the traffic's gonna be coming down Woodward Heights to get down the alleyway, or Oak Ridge, to get down the alleyway, to get into these businesses. So there we are, right back where we started with the traffic. We're gonna spend all this money to put stuff in place that's, you put a chicane when you turn onto Woodward Heights, how are they gonna get to the alleyway? Guess what they're gonna be, stopped right in front of my driveway, and I'm never gonna get in and out of it. So don't put, you're not gonna put driveways on Wood, on Woodward, but you're gonna now block all the driveways on the side streets with traffic. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think I will close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed?
If I may.
Yes, please.
There's a couple of things I forgot to mention that were hit on, I'd like to clarify, and I have a couple, just a couple responses. Not arguments, but responses, I guess. First, the Planning Commission can modify the standards. The Planning Commission is the site plan reviewing body, not the City Commission. The ordinance gives the Planning Commission the ability to modify the standards, to allow a driveway to remain or to be built, depending on the characteristics of the use. So, and, and George Lenko was correct that we typically don't grant variances, because it's a high standard to meet. By giving the Planning Commission the ability to modify the standards of the ordinance, they don't have to meet zone, a variance standard to allow a driveway to remain. It's actually a lower standard, they just have to consider and see if that's, you know, if it's reasonable for use to have a driveway or not. The second one is that the specific language in the ordinance to trigger compliance with this is a change of use in the building, or building a building or enlarging a building. So nothing, nothing would require a funeral home or any of our other gas station or oil changethe or Comerica, nothing would require them to change anything with their site, until they were, they proposed some change first. So this is entirely, we're not requiring anyone to do anything until something is proposed. One thing the Commission could consider would be to, to change that standard. Right now, the standard that says no building shall be erected or enlarged, you could put a minimum enlargement threshold in there, so enlarged more than 10% or, you know, some number to allow for reinvestment in buildings. I don't think that an expansion of more than, say, 10% is going to be possible in most cases because of the parking requirements. If you expand your building more than 10% or so, you're going to trigger an increase in parking requirements, you're expanding your buildings, you're probably losing space on the site, now you have to provide more parking, it's, you know, and under today's parking standards, I don't know that most places are gonna be able to expand their building more than 10%. We certainly don't want to, to dis-encourage investment in properties. So again, that trigger right now is enlargement or change of use, enlargement of the building.
So, as an example, if someone wanted to reface their building and freshen the appearance of their building, that's not a change in use, it doesn't change the square footage, it doesn't change the amount of parking, and it doesn't have any impact whatsoever on these amendments.
Correct.
As I understand it.
Exactly.
If the ownership has changed, it doesn't have any impact whatsoever in this regard, so if it's sold-
If it's the same use.
If it's the same use, if it's sold, if it's willed, if any of these things happen, it wouldn't necessarily-
It wouldn't, not even necessarily, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't.
So if Comerica left and Bank of America came in, no change.
Right.
Another, another point was the bike lanes, that is correct, they are in the alley currently south of Sylvan, that was an MDOT requirement. We have every intention of completing the bike lane along the front of Woodward eventually, and we're gonna continue to work towards that. It's a, it's a temporary, I don't know how long temporary is, but with MDOT, but that's, that's in the plan. The, the comparison, I, I think the point is, John, you're correct, your use is different than Ameriprise and the condos, but this is the range of uses. If you sold your property, it could be any of these, if somebody wanted to buy it and redevelop it for something. That was really kind of what I was, you know, looking at, not any one specific site. And I hope you stay and operate your business for a long time.
I'm not going anywhere right now, I am, I'm still-
When it is, when it is time for you to go, or, you know, sell.
I have, I have a son who will, who will take it over.
Good, good. So yeah, I mean, status quo is intended to remain status quo with this. So that was the point of the, this comparison, was more of a check. So I think those are the, the points. Oh, the marijuana site, they do have a driveway on the Woodward, and it is in Ferndale, so that's not part of this discussion. So I think that's it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Commission has.
I have a question for you. Now, say I have a deck upstairs, if I want to enclose that, is that adding square footage, or am I, am I modifying at that point?
It's not expanding the building.
That was one of my questions, it's like, how do we define expansion, or like an outbuilding, or something like a-
Yeah, there's a lot of-
Like adding a garage, so.
Modification is a vague term, you know?
May I, may I say one thing?
Just for the matter of procedure. Thank you. Well, we're gonna have a conversation.
Yeah. And again, modification, there's a section that deals with modifications, that's where the Planning Commission can modify these standards to allow you to have. Nothing in the triggers says modification of a building.
But is this enlarge or erect?
Enlarge or erect, correct.
So you could erect a garage, like that's not existing today, would that trigger the driveway?
Under this language, it could, and that's something that certainly I would suggest you consider if you want to change that, change that trigger to allow for something.
And I think, I just wanted to reiterate what Jim said, because I did read, read through it all many times, but again yesterday, and there is no use of the word modify in terms of the ordinance. The modification was strictly referring to the Planning Commission's ability to modify this on a case-by-case basis, because you are right, most things come in front of the Planning Commission, and I think you had said that. And although marijuana, it is in Ferndale, that actually is a very good example, in my opinion, of what we would be looking at when we are looking at the use of a building, and to the point of the traffic on Woodward Heights, to be able to look at a case-by-case situation and to say, hey, you know- and to say, hey, you know what, we do need a driveway here and we do need to modify. Again, modification being below variance, so it does not have all of the strict requirements that the planning commission needs to allow that to happen. And my last comment would be, I would like to engage, have the conversation of talking about whether it be a percentage or something else to allow some flexibility with that terminology of expansion, you know, to clarify that and to give some leeway there.
Right, I think for me, the interesting thing is that if we had, if we didn't have this conversation and you wanted, anyone on Woodward wanted to expand their building, they'd probably bump into a size limitation, as Jim has said, meaning wrecking a garage or adding square footage to the building might increase the parking space to the extent that it couldn't be done, it just won't fit. So that's part of the logic that went into this, is that there's not actually a lot that people can do on Woodward to expand their buildings, with one possible exception, and that's the lot at East Tin Mile and Main Street where there's no building, there's no cutout, it could be anything. So.
Somebody, I'm sorry, but somebody could buy a building next door to them and turn it into a parking lot, giving them extra parking by which they would also be able to expand their building. At that point, it triggers that.
And they would most certainly appear in front of the planning commission for something that major.
Oh, exactly, but it's harder to get a variance than it is to.
It's not a variance.
So, so that was my thinking about it, is that it's, for as long as I've been on the city commission, most of the topics that come to us from residents are about peacefulness, about roads, it's being able to walk comfortably, it's all of these things that make the community a walkable, bikeable community, we've said that for easily 10 years.
Yeah.
So this is one of those items that is here to try to address that along Woodward as we look at biking and pedestrian traffic. And it seems like a reasonable approach to me, we're gonna have a conversation on what it might mean to, on this topic of enlargement perhaps, or there might be other things that we wanna cover. Is there other?
Yeah, my only couple of points, so either define enlarge or erect, if we're putting some parameters around enlarge, I'm all for that, like to create some boundaries. I'm also curious about what it is Ferndale's doing and when they're gonna implement something like this.
They're not doing anything on this right now.
Driveways? No, okay. Okay. Then the DDA, and then just, yeah, I guess next steps for the DDA depending on where this lands, but, because there's really only six businesses, which, like, what kind of outreach has been done, I wonder, in communicating with these businesses just to kind of get their sense, like, does it make sense to do a deeper dive into the numbers, potentially? So that's where I'm at, but recommending a percentage is where I'd start.
The planning commission also and the DDA did approve this.
Right, they approved it.
Okay.
What type of outreach was done to, that wasn't my question.
Oh, I thought you had said, like, what's the next steps for the DDA? So I just wanted to clarify.
No, as far as next steps for the DDA, I would recommend is communicating with the six, and then potentially doing this analysis, but looking at properties that have lost a driveway. So instead of doing an apple, whatever, in Pleasant Ridge, comparing all businesses, all commercial properties in Pleasant Ridge against one another, do a sort of businesses that have been sold and lost a driveway, just to understand what the impact to the value is. Because this would imply that not having a driveway is more valuable and like add its face value when the market forces have led all business owners to lose their driveway, if that's the case.
Well, the best example of that is actually the condominiums, one at the very top, because that used to be a gas station, the condominium site, and then it turned into Falcon Golf. And so, other than that, I mean, nothing has really changed in Pleasant Ridge, other than that redevelopment, but that's probably the best example. And certainly the condos have a lot more value in the land than the gas station did. Our current gas station is towards the bottom of the list. Other than that, I'm not aware offhand.
I'm not saying in Pleasant Ridge, I'm saying just regionally or, like, in, the folks who are running, like, the bicycle studies, like, do they have this information in cities that have endeavored to do such a thing?
So I asked, I did ask the county assessor, our assessor, is Oakland County, and I asked if they had any examples of, you know, value studies, and they don't track and they don't keep track of, you know, properties of a, who had a driveway and then lost it. They just, there's no readily accessible way, unless you know of a place to go look at to get that information, it's not really out there, at least accessible to us, that we know of. That's why, the condominium example is probably the only local one that we know of. Because that did, that was a gas station with driveways on the Woodward, Falcon Golf had driveways on the Woodward, and then it was redeveloped at the highest use, so. And again, that's an example of redevelopment and use change, fundamentally changing the character of a property.
Yeah, going from gas station to retail must have been costly to remediate.
Well, they didn't remediate, they didn't remediate when it went to retail, because you can, that's a non, one, I mean, Falcon Golf came in a long time ago, so some of the environmental laws weren't as exacting as they are today, but also is a commercial use of land, so that doesn't always trigger remediation requirements. When it went to, when it went to residential, that triggered all of those, and I believe there was a brown field on that property. They're still monitoring wells all over, some of them are in Maywood, so surrounding the property, there are still monitoring wells to keep track of what's going on with the groundwater. So that was all done as part of the redevelopment to residential, the cleanup.
Is there any other?
Really no, just getting to what that percentage is gonna look like if we define enlarge or erect.
Any proposals? Or is that something we want to bring back?
Well, I know you guys, we had, or I had, I don't know, briefly, you know, discussing, Commissioner Schmier and I were just saying, you know, what if it is like a 10% propose, increase in size, would that be something? I mean, I think, okay, sort of my whole position with this is, you know, regarding the ordinance, is, you know, we're designing for the city, you know, the, the traffic and everything that we want. We're designing for vehicle, bike and pedestrian traffic to, to be able to work. And, you know, I mean, I think the biggest point is, you know, we don't want this to become some fearful thing that, you know, company, you know, businesses are going to lose, you know, and, you know, you and I spoke, John, that it's like you're not going to lose your driveway just because you improve your property. Now, enlarging it and making big changes or the change of ownership, the change of purpose, obviously, are what changes it, but it's like regulating the curb cuts, you know, is a normal planning tool that is used, you know, across the globe to sort of create safer and comfortable biking and walking situations. So it is one of those things that it does make a lot of sense. But, you know, as they said, it's like there are a lot of important things that you can take into consideration too, like the situation with the marijuana parking lot, you know, that has a definite need to be able to, you know, move traffic in and out smoothly and to work better with Woodward and with the surrounding community. Now, the larger community vision, I mean, I think this is one of the things that Pleasant Ridge, you know, it's important that we all, it's, it's one of the things I've embraced, and I think it's great that we've, we've worked hard on this, is that, you know, it's like when we look at the larger community and the vision that we have along the Woodward corridor, I mean, I think it helps improve the property values, it improves the, the value of our community from, you know, an aesthetic perspective, but also, you know, more from the perspective of, because it is well-planned, it's well-thought-through, it attracts more people. And making it, you know, the Woodward corridor a walkable, bikeable area has been something that, you know, we've all worked on for a long time. So I think the good thing is, it's not something that, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, there was like such, that feels like it's going to impact you right away, but it seems like unless you have a huge idea for, for making a change or for selling, it's, it is not something that will have any negative impact on you. And, and there is, you know, the planning commission does have the ability to, to modify the decision and things too, if it all makes sense and works. But we're trying to support, you know, the businesses to be strong businesses as well as, and, you know, these gradual changes are, are things that I think are a good, you know, they, they help us all move forward in a slow way that we don't feel as much of an impact, thanks.
Yeah, I guess I'll say it again, I think that large improvements to the buildings on Woodward will likely bump into other zoning ordinances that have to be addressed. So if we did nothing tonight, you'd bump into something else that is already existing ordinance. The buildings can only be so large and, but it doesn't mean that you can't improve it. If you want, I think I told someone else, if you want green glass and stainless steel and whatever, it doesn't really, it doesn't, this ordinance doesn't impact that, so, sorry.
Yeah, if I could just, a thought on the, what is the trigger? If it's, you know, some sort of zone of expansion you can make without triggering this requirement? And you'd asked me in a question about this, Mayor, about, you know, a trigger other than a percentage, if it was, you know, triggering a different parking requirement or, you know, increasing a parking requirement. And initially, and I actually spoke with, with City Attorney Nead about this to pick his brain on, you know, if he's seen or familiar with any of those kinds of triggers versus a straight percentage. And he hadn't, and both of us have seen percentages, but as I think about it more, I think, I think it might be, I think, because we don't know, every property is, you know, different. We have a tenth of an acre versus a half an acre, you know, your percentages are different, everything's different on the property. Maybe it is, maybe the trigger is something that, an expansion of the building that causes an increase, an increase in the parking requirement.
To me, that makes sense because the likelihood is that the removal of the driveway will change how you want parking to work anyway.
Right.
And so if you tie it to the driveway and tie the driveway and the parking lot somehow together, then it's likely you'll, you'll come to a good, amicable solution.
Right, because if you're increasing the size of your building enough that you're triggering you need more parking, well, if you have a driveway, actually, that driveway is eating up space that you could use for parking. By closing that driveway, you have a drive aisle that you can now harvest for parking spaces to support the expansion of your building. So there actually is, I think, a reasonable nexus with that, with that approach. That might be, you know, that might be the way to go for a trigger, is you can expand any expansion that increases the parking requirement, triggers closing the driveway.
And then, at least for me, it feels a little less arbitrary, because if we pick a number of five or 10% or 20%, I could feel us walking down a rabbit hole, 20% of what?
Right. Exactly, and then, you know, to Commissioner Lenko's point, if you're building a garage, that's an accessory building. So that doesn't actually change the parking requirement, because it's not part of the eastern accessory building, so if you have space where you can build a garage.
But that garage might cause you to lose two parking spaces and fall out a couple.
Right, but if it doesn't.
But go for it.
Then it's, it's free.
But still erect.
Exactly.
Cause you'd lose.
Well, that's what we're talking about changing, is that provision.
So, so to clarify, what you're saying is, let's say someone wanted to expand 500 square feet, whatever it is, they want to expand, and they still have enough parking to meet the parking requirement for this new enlarged building. They have enough parking, then nothing happens with their driveway, as long as they have enough parking to, to fulfill the needs of their new enlarged building. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, because you can't enlarge your building to the point where you are no longer complying with parking requirements.
What happens if you already have enough parking to comply with the new larger building?
Right, the driveway stays.
The driveway stays, or if you do build this accessory building and you still have enough parking spaces as it stands with your driveway, then are we suggesting that nothing changes with the driveway? If your new expanded building, again, and you have enough parking spaces to support that, then nothing changes, that's what you're, am I understanding that correctly?
That's my understanding, so if, if the building is expanded and does not drive a change.
Well, that, that really kind of, you're at a point where you couldn't, you might as well take the expansion trigger out at that point.
Why is that?
Because if the trigger is where you no longer meet parking standards, then, well, you can't do an expansion. Where you no longer meet parking standards on your site, because you don't meet parking standards. So the size of the expansion you can do is limited to the, to, you know, you meeting your parking requirement on the site.
I think the question was, what if there are, as it's, as the building sits today, there are more parking spaces than needed. So the building is expanded to meet exactly the number of parking spaces that exist.
Right, and you can go no further with your expansion than that. So nothing, so the only way you could trigger closing a driveway would be expanding your building so much that you don't meet parking requirements. So fundamentally now, the expansion, it's, that clause is not doing anything, you might as well eliminate it.
But, but, but I think that actually.
Which is, you know.
Which I think actually makes sense, because at the end of the day, you would not be able, you would not be able to expand anyway because you don't meet parking requirements. So it is actually circular, which works.
Nothing would ever trigger, if you put that standard in, no building expansion would ever trigger removing the parking space, removing the driveway. So you might as well not have it in the ordinance.
Oh, because, because the building couldn't be expanded anyway.
Exactly.
Right.
You couldn't expand the building to the point that it would trigger removing the driveway, because you can't expand the building beyond the parking requirement you can meet.
Right.
So.
I agree.
So the only way that it's triggered to remove the driveway is if you do anything that increases the parking requirement at all, regardless of how much parking you have on the site.
Okay, so does this essentially wash away the parking being the trigger?
It's, no, it's not the parking.
It's the expansion.
The expansion, sorry.
Upbuilding.
Right, because it won't happen anyway.
So now are we?
Or maybe it's just 10%.
Right, are we now going back to a percentage?
I like that, but would we tie it to the current parking rules? Like, let's say the parking rules change in 10 years, it just seems, I don't like tying rules to other rules, it'd like stand on its own, but.
Parking requirements could change.
It makes a lot of sense.
So.
Right.
Right, well, that, then, then if it is tied to parking, it then allows for a bigger expansion. But it sounds like the parking and the expansion are not a good.
They're both potentially moving targets.
Right. So then back to a percentage.
Okay.
I'm gonna suggest 15%.
I'm just curious where that came from.
You know, it just came from, honestly, it was fairly arbitrary, I don't know if we have any buildings that truly can go 15%. I know in the past, some of our, some of the previous ordinances have said 25%, that felt a little large to me, so I am, I am suggesting 15 as a starting point for discussion.
So an increase of 15% of the current building?
Right, and again, from what it sounds like, there's no building that can truly expand 15%, right? But there might be, right, there might be.
So let's say it's a 5,000 square foot building, so 10% of that is 500 square feet.
So 750.
So add another 250, so 750, like, that's a small room.
I mean, I think the first floor of my house is 750, but okay.
Well, I'm talking about.
I know, I mean, listen.
You walked into a funeral home in Ameriprise, right? Like, like if you walk into like one of these buildings, commercial is different than residential, I think that's, those aren't apples to apples.
750 square feet is four parking spaces.
You're making me feel bad about my hat, no kidding.
I think it would need to be higher, but I think it's close, I'd like, I mean, it doesn't need to be 100%.
If you make it higher than 15%, my sense is just take it out entirely. Because at that point, it won't, it won't trigger anything.
So it would just, at that point, go to change of use?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, change of use.
Change of use, and again, to reiterate, that's not sale of property, but that is change of use, whether it's you or the next owners.
And again, retail can change to another retail use, that's not a change of use, even if it's a different business, but retail use to retail use, not change of use.
And I, and as I look at the list of properties, I see only, well, not include, we have, we have the main. And I, and as I look at the list of properties, I see only, well, not include, we have, we have the Main Street conversation as well. Aside from Main Street, I only see two where, where I can imagine an expansion.
Right.
Comerica's a big lot with a small building. And I don't actually know, and I look at the Will property, whether there are more spaces or if it's actually maximized to the number of spaces that it can hold.
What about the expansion to the building next door? I mean, we are seeing that with our next conversation with marijuana, but it is kind of, you know, a, a taking of attached buildings and combining them. So in a situation like that, there is potential for expansion with some of these buildings if they are combining spaces.
Well, the, the marijuana business is a good example. They have a retail parking standard. And they had to knock down, they have to knock down half the building to provide the minimum required parking on their site. So, you know, that's Ben. It was Vogue Vintage. And they clearly didn't meet the parking requirements. So we've got a lot of these, most of these sites are kind of grandfathered in.
Yeah, I think I would take out the expansion because I think other things are going to trigger.
Yeah. Which I think that's reasonable.
Is that reasonable for everyone?
I'm okay with that.
All right. I think we need a.
You had a good point too about Main Street.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Do you want to include Main Street because of the?
My suggestion was that we have, I think it's six parcels on Main Street, not, there are two parking lots.
Yeah.
On Main Street, neither of which have properties and neither of which have cutouts for driveways today, but could. So it makes sense to me that we would want Main Street to behave as Woodward does and follow the same ordinance. So we should add the words, I think we should add Main Street to it. I think we need someone to make a, a motion, an amended motion, or a motion.
All right. Would you, would you like me to suggest one for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So the motion would be to to amend Chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Section 82-3 definitions, Section 82-164 yard and bulk requirements, Section 82-197 special land use, and the addition of a new Section 82-208 access management be approved with the elimination of subsection 3B2.
Yes.
3B2?
Regar, yep. And adding Main Street along with Woodward Avenue to Section 82-208.
82-208.
And I'm sorry, it's not 3B2, it's 82-208B2.
Say that again, 82 dash?
208. That's the new section. Subsection B, subsection 2 is the section that deals with erecting or enlarging, triggering, closing a driveway. We would be eliminating that subsection 2.
So I'll give it a try. Correct me where I'm wrong. All right, Mayor, I move that the ordinance to amend Chapter 82 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Section 82-3 definitions, Section 82-164 yard and bulk requirements, Section 82-197 special land use, and the addition of a new Section 82-208 be approved with the elimination of the presented 82-208 subsection B2, also adding Main Street to the scope along with Woodward. Is there a second?
I second.
Any other discussion? Could I have a vote?
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Thanks for everyone for coming on that conversation. You helped us guide the topic. All right, it does. All right.
Can I ask a question? Where do we find the, what you were talking about, the amount of space usage, like dimensions of, you were talking about somebody putting on a patio. What is the land usage specifications? Where do we find those?
So.
I'm not sure I.
If I may, so the question is.
Yard and bulk requirements.
Yard and bulk.
Oh, where are the yard and bulk requirements?
Yeah.
Those are in the zoning ordinance, Chapter 82. If you go to the city website and go to government, there's a dropdown for city code. And Chapter 82 in the city code is the zoning ordinance, which contains all of the, all of those requirements.
If you, and a, a quick key is just, there's a search function, just type in yard bulk. It'll take you right there.
Yard and bulk.
Yard and bulk. Actually, either words will, will take you there, I think. Yeah.
That's a good tool.
The search tool works perfectly.
Because it punches out.
I've eliminated half of my calls to Jim just by pressing. All right, let's move on to item nine about Knox.
Yes.
Would you like to open that?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick, brief introduction. So Skyment, we're seeing a shakeout in the marijuana industry. There's, you know, no question. It was a cover story in Cranes this week about, you know, just kind of the Wild West phase, I think, for the marijuana industry is coming to a close. And we're seeing, we're seeing that change and eventual consolidation now. So Skyment gained approval from you in August, and in early October, they informed me that they were no longer pursuing this location in Pleasant Ridge. So Knox has submitted an application. They've, I guess, secured the site and the rights to the site. They're submitting an application, which is by and large identical to the Skyment application. Skyment did all the hard work for them on this with all the traffic studies and parking studies and all of that, revising the site plan, you know, probably four times. So Knox is, is benefiting and keeping all of that in place. Of course, it is a different operator, so they have a different, I guess, business model? They, they have a little bit different building design and branding than Skyment. Those are probably the major changes. With us tonight are some representatives. I think we have Ben and Julia and Travis. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over. We've been through all of this. We have all the information and data. You can ask me or them any questions you want about this. But I'm just going to let them introduce themselves. We're not, we got a complete application from them this week. We haven't been fully through the review, so there's no action being requested tonight. That will come in January. This is just an opportunity for you to meet the new team and to, you know, give any feedback you have on the preliminary, on the, well, it's not preliminary, on the application. And anything else that you want to communicate to them. Whoever's doing the presentation, this will move your, move through the slides for you. Just hit the middle button, so.
The floor is yours. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So. Good, my, my name is Benjamin Jofar. I represent the applicant Rapid Fish, too, doing businesses Knox. And I do want to thank you all for your time and your service, and especially City Manager Brockman, for all of his help throughout this process. And I want to reiterate how excited the applicant is to potentially be a part of your community. As the city manager has already stated, and you can see from the application, it is almost identical to the previously approved Skyment application. That's by design. As we put together that application, we, we reviewed the, the meetings. We, we looked at the comments that were made by this commission. We looked at the comments made by the residents of Pleasant Ridge, and we looked at the comments of the other stakeholders. And what we found was to meet the goals and objectives of the city, when you, when you did that Skyment application, the best way to do that was to hew as closely to that application as possible. So with, so with that being said, we do have the same footprint on the building. We have all the same pro, parking. We have the same directional indicators in that parking lot to try and keep people out of the alley because we, we do know that was a big thing. We're also committed to those same commitments that Skyment was making, including working with, with some of the neighbors, including installing a fence in the alley with, in conjunction with that neighbor. So, so we want to be here. We want to be a part of the community. With that being said, I'd, I'd like to, to bring up, this is Mr. Travis Harrison. He is the Chief Revenue Officer, and this is Ms. Julia Colasimo. She is the Chief People Officer. They're going to come up, give you, give you a little overview of who we are, what we do, and, and what we stand for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Scott and City Commissioners, thank you for this time this evening, as, as my colleague Ben Jofar spoke to. My name is Travis Harrison. I am the Chief Revenue Officer for Knox. And wanted to put together a very high level brief overview of not only our, our leadership, but also our brand and us as retailers, as exemplified by some of the businesses that we're operating today in the city of Grand Rapids. So with that, I will move forward. Okay. Let's see if I get this right. Actually, I went back. Here we go. All right. So our leadership team here today, essentially, everybody on this list has been working in cannabis for at least the last four years. And the majority of the individuals here have been working within retail, such as myself for, myself at minimum of 15 years. Certainly a jaded retailer at this point in time, but spent 10 years at Ralph Lauren and in five years, almost five years at Shinola here in the greater Detroit area as their Vice President of Retail. Our founder, as a former regulator with the, with the State Attorney's Office, as well as Julia Colasimo behind us, who spent time at Luxadia, and Ben Jofar, our General Counsel, with a large multi-state operator in the cannabis space. But then our Chief Marketing Officer at Domino's and Nestle and so on and so, so forth. So really, the message here is that we are, we are retailers at heart, consumer-centric minded about the consumer experience, both from a regulatory perspective, but also from a compliance perspective. So. So I wanted to take an additional moment to walk through our branding, how we represent ourselves to our, to our consumer, how we represent ourselves to the, both cannabis, but then non-cannabis consumer. Obviously, being on Woodward's a tremendous opportunity for us to present ourselves as a brand. Again, in the likeness of a regulated, regulated business full of compliance, but also consumer interests as it relates to a recreational product. And the, the icon that we, we chose here was really one devised of positivity, judgment-free, fear of, free of fear. We started with a smiley face. For those of you who may be familiar with Cause, the Bedrock statue that sits there in the, the roundabout, that was also a major inspiration for us, that, that sculpture, and thus you have the, the excise. But we, we started with the story of a, a being from, from outside of this space or this planet, if you will, that I, I think is humanity, we can be full of judgment at times. And we wanted to create a mission statement that was about embracing your space, whether it was yourself, your beliefs that, that you hold, your community inclusivity, certainly humanity, mental health. And so we, we chose embrace your space along with that, that, that brand logo that we felt truly embodied cannabis and the cannabis consumer in today's recreational state of affairs. So our, our mission story, Knox is on a mission to create a more inclusive world through the power of cannabis. As Knox explores different galaxies on a mission to share cannabis with all beings, Knox embraces the very things that makes us all unique without fear or judgment. So that's obviously our, our mission statement and our story behind our, our brand. And then just very high level, a little bit of some of our media and earned PR. We've been featured in a, a, a national business journal, New Cannabis Ventures. I was in Detroit Free Press. We, we held the, the front page above the fold about two months ago. Cranes Detroit did a profile on us, Benzinga in the Cannabis Capital Newsletter and editorial. In Grand Rapids where we operate, local news came out and covered our, our upcoming location at 330 Ann Street in the industrial corridor there in Grand Rapids, as well as several varying Grand Rapids magazines and business journals as well. We've also garnered some, some national attention. Weed Maps is, is one of the major players in the cannabis space from a, from a marketing and advertising space. And we were selected quite randomly, actually, based on some feedback from our, from our customer reviews and some of the traction that we got with local media, and selected some of our, our store managers and our budtenders to speak in this, in this outlet, which was quite an honor for us. But then we're also chosen again by a national cannabis news outlet, the MJ Unpacked. We were chosen as one of six Michigan retailers that really stood out from the rest of, rest of those. Skyment was not one of them for note. But we were also in the, the, the local radio and editorial piece there. So a bit on, again, our, our, our retail. We, we opened our first retail door in Grand Rapids, our flagship destination in Oc, October. And we've had a tremendous outpouring of both support and success as a business that is on 28th Street. And then our second location opened in late October. That's a, a location at, at Plainfield Avenue. And have again seen tremendous success at that location as well. Whereas the first one's very much of a flagship, as you might imagine, high traffic on 28th Street, if you're familiar. Lots of, lots of eyes and attention. We've been incredibly busy there. And then our second location is very much a, a neighborhood store, you know, very much about the local community, which I'll get into in a moment. But we've, you know, we're seeing different price points, different purchase prices, maybe, maybe a different consumer demographic, whether that be home income or otherwise. But it's been an interesting way to look at this two business models, one again flagship and one more neighborhood. And then our, our last location that we're opening in Grand Rapids there in the industrial corridor is mentioned. We've done a, a recent brand licensing partnership with a national cannabis brand and retailer Cookies located in, in Los Angeles. There are several other Cookies in Michigan at this point in time. We will own the, the rights to Cookies Cannabis in the Grand Rapids area. So the image that you see there at the bottom is a 20,000 square foot processing facility. Sorry, 15,000 square foot processing and cultivation facility plus a 5,000 square foot retail destination, which will operate as a Cookies under our Knox, Knox operations.
Flour and cookies.
Yes, exactly.
I had to be punny.
Yeah, it was good. It was good. This industry begs for it in many respects. But I, I, I wanted to take an additional moment to really show off some of the, the interior design of, of our, our store space. We partnered with, at MJ Biz in Las, Las Vegas two years ago, a, a group that had worked with Walt Disney Company, NFL stores. In fact, they designed the, the Lions NFL store here in Detroit most recently. They are national global retailers, you know, so they designed everything from lighting. As you can see, the striations of light down the side, those are actually illuminated walls. We really spared no expense in this location, working with Weld Works, a, a local builder of, of the wall and the glass wall feature. So we had a lot of fun designing it and really designing it for the retail and consumer experience. One for familiarity, ease of shop, cleanliness, but also ease of transaction, right? Our ability to, to transact where the customer wants to be met, whether that's online, pickup in store, and/or a fully vetted, trained experience around what is cannabis, you know, starting from the, the start to finish there. So again, just a, a bit more detail on, on product, how it sits in the store, how it's visually represented, the cleanliness in some of the design elements, price points and, and otherwise.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
You have Knox branded products, correct?
We do as well.
And are those packaged in Grand Rapids or are they packaged elsewhere?
They're packaged in, well, currently, they're packaged in Calcasca at a, at a co-packer of ours that we partnership with. They will be actually transitioning into our processing facility once that's operational in, in late January.
Got it.
That, that's all part of the plan. Yep. So I, just in continuation of some of the outpouring of, of feedback and positive responsiveness, in the four months of operation, we've already received 300. In the four months of operation, we've already received 338 reviews and we're at a 4.9 star rating for any of you that are familiar with retail. You know, people live and die by this Google review and it's obviously incredibly important to ensure that we're gaining this feedback and delivering on the promise that we make as retailers to our customer. So we feel very fortunate and to have earned their respect and admiration, as you can see here. Whether that be this is our favorite dispensary or has the best prices and selection to has the best staff and/or is this is their new go-to spot. So would certainly welcome anybody to go on to Google Review for Knox and conceive for themselves and have a moment to read through that.
Four months or two and a half months?
Four months since our first store opened.
In October?
In October.
Is my math off? October, November?
I'm sorry, September. September for our first store and October for our second Plainfield. And so that was just for 28th Street.
Okay.
So I thought this was an important slide. Certainly job creation story. For me at Shinola, it was a major piece of my job and I've brought that to the cannabis space as well. Certainly this industry is the number one leading job creation industry today. And we are proud to be a part of that. We plan on creating jobs in Grand Rapids alone at our processing facility and retail at well over 200. And in our step to get to that point in time, we have a 11% turnover. So not only have we had success in finding whether they people are color or people from disparaged communities and giving them those jobs with us at Knox, we've then been able to retain and hang on to that talent. So as industry standard of nearly 55% turn, we're at 11%. So we're getting employees that want to stay with us and grow within our organization as we scale and provide more opportunities for those employees. And then just a bit more on how we connect with the community. Again, we're young within the community. We're not young to cannabis, but we're young in the Grand Rapids community, but we have really gotten out ahead of that and done as much as we possibly could to connect, whether that be through supporting local, supporting small businesses, Lights on Creston, being a part of that community and participating in, you know, holiday food drives and other. It's obviously come up very, very quickly. Last weekend, Julia and others were actually there and celebrating the Lights on Creston in the Creston community and on Plainfield. And so that really brings us to where we are today with our application for submission with yourselves in the city of Pleasant Ridge. And some of the obviously site plans that you've had a chance to look at in review and in great detail, whether that was back with this Sky Mint application and/or with us. And again, to my colleagues' perspective, you know, incredibly minimal changes to the site plan. So I walked you through a bit about, you know, our team and our fixture and our design and obviously job creation story. But as you can see outside of the site plan, you can take a, let's see.
Yeah, I added that one in.
Gotcha.
It's the before.
The before.
Right. Thank you, City Manager. Yeah, so was actually here this afternoon and taking a look at the space in preparation for this evening. And this is obviously what we intend to do with the space. Again, not wholly dissimilar from that of Sky Mint, but certainly cleaning it, modernizing it, bringing in new materials and really beautifying the space. Obviously, obviously with updated landscaping as well as bicycle stanchions and otherwise. Bringing in some of the design elements that we are now known for in the city of Grand Rapids on some of the exterior front-facing elevations and/or otherwise. We feel that our design components will really mesh with the local community. And obviously, there's a tremendous amount of discussion as it relates to parking and some of the wayfinding, you know, directionality that you'll find here. That is that south-facing wall of what is currently the Hertz location entering off of Woodward into the site. And then obviously a back detail of the rear-facing property, as you can see here. That placeholder in the previous slide is really that placeholder, which is to be a a mural space for a local artist of the city's choosing. And so that won't be a Knox mural, but will be a local artist's mural that we select, you know, together. But obviously you can see the continuation of some of the wayfinding and our back entry, you know, together with landscaping and additional bike racks and 26 parking spots is outlined in the site plan. So with that, I want to thank you all. Appreciate your time. Hope I wasn't too long-winded. I hope I answered your questions and you got a feel for who we are as an organization, some of our leadership and how we conduct business, not only ourselves as an operation, but also with our customers that we hold near and dear. So any questions in closing?
I do, if I'm okay to start. You mentioned that you had watched the commission meetings. Did you both watch the full commission meetings from the last from Sky Mint?
I watched it today, in fact.
Potential concerns and potential issues that you saw just based on the numbers from looking at that traffic study? I mean, do you see potential issues and if so, what are those?
Yeah, I mean, I think the traffic study really speaks for itself. It's based on those national statistics for these types of retail things. I think my biggest concern is, well, I don't want to be, my biggest concern is that we're possibly too successful. And I think that would be a great concern for us to have.
So when you have had problems there, do you have a process established of how to address those problems, whether it be with a customer, resident, city? I mean, what, you know, what is kind of the process at this point and how will you be responding to those? And how quickly will you be responding to those?
So we do have a process and I know Sky Mint's internal process was similar that they had for the complaints. We have direct phone lines to use Rico and Desiree, they're like our regional managers' operations to call. If you email us, we respond within eight hours. There's like an info.
Obviously, you know, when we went over this with Sky Mint too, we'll be utilizing those back spots for employee, the ones that are in the alley that people were concerned maybe using the alley more. But for that particular space, yeah, we see it right now as a flex space, again, storage of materials, things of that nature, packaging. And then we may have a couple of people there at some points.
Okay. I think it's worth noting, you know, just to one of your earlier questions, you know, if we're doing our job to hire locally, you know, from the communities in which we operate, right, it behooves us to that end so that we could have that positive consumer, you know, budtender or consumer brand experience. And I don't know the exact percentages, but, you know, anecdotally, I feel like at least 50% of our Plainfield site, which is a little bit more of our local store in Grand Rapids, they live in the city of Creston or the neighborhood of Creston, I should say. So, you know, we heard from the employees, the city didn't ask us to install bike racks. We installed bike racks because literally half of the plus of the store team lived locally. So it'll certainly be an objective of ours to help diminish our employee parking, which as you can imagine, could be upwards of 15, you know, cars at any given time to be that of a local resident, right?
So to that 15 people working a given shift, is that what you're suggesting or saying?
No, I think it depends. Depends on the proposed volume of the door. But currently today, we have anywhere between eight and 10 people on a shift at a time.
Okay. And I think the last question that I have at this moment is just about special events. Do you have any regular special events? Will you be having any special events? Talk to me about special events and of course then the resulting traffic and parking coming from special events.
Mm-hmm. You know, for our Plainfield location, we received, to Julia's point earlier, we partnered with a local spate, you know, lot, right? So we have a parking agreement with that lot. And in fact, we've been directing additional customers to park there in addition to some of our employees. So, you know, if there's an opportunity for us to have that, certainly we'll look for opportunities like that. But as it relates to special events, you know, in three and a half, four months, we've only had a grand opening and don't really, we don't have parties. So it's, you know, maybe there's a food truck for the opening and some balloons and, you know, and otherwise. But outside of that, it's business as usual, you know, whether that be sales and promotion, not dissimilar from any other, you know, retail type of establishment, whether it be a holiday sale or a, you know, spring, a spring/summer sale.
I think one of the questions I sent over was when we think about just the volume of people coming through the door every day, if you could describe what your biggest day is. Maybe it isn't April 20th. Maybe it's another day. Maybe it's Memorial Day. So whatever that is, that probably defines for us what that.
Certainly.
It's a special event to us if it generates traffic.
That's right.
So we're trying to understand whether you have days of the year that might be, that might rest to help or might be a burden onto the citizens around you.
And I think that's a great opportunity. Every time that we have, well, hosted a grand opening, because we haven't hosted any other events, obviously getting a permit from the city, right? So there's clear and proper notification to whether they be police in or fire or otherwise, right? And that additional support will be necessary. But Green Wednesday, you know, 4/20 holiday, you know, maybe the Fourth of July in the summertime. Those are the real big holidays, you know, not exceeding the month of December, as you might imagine. But really outside of that, those are the big tent pole holidays, if you will.
And if you could, since you weren't open at those dates, if you could estimate what you think those would look like, then that helps us understand if it's something different than we might have heard from Sky Mint and maybe it generates a different kind of planning. We don't anticipate that, but you never know until we look at the numbers.
Yeah. In terms of sales volume, I think it's hard to predict, you know, certainly a new business, it takes time. You know, cannabis is no longer, you don't open a cannabis store and there's a line around the block anymore. I kind of wish that were the case, but it's not. And so, you know, we're in competition with some of the other local, you know, retailers of cannabis now, right? And so we're actually very, we're spending thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, in fact, trying to win the hearts, minds and souls of the cannabis consumer to shop with us versus somebody else. So it isn't like opening our doors is going to create this tidal wave of consumers. But, you know, when we do have those big events, a Green Wednesday, a Fourth of July weekend, they are quite big, right? So, you know, those can generate hundreds of thousands of dollars in a, you know, given two to three-day period and hundreds of transactions. So I don't know when that happens, whether that's in year one versus year three. Because look, I've opened 65 stores in my retail career, 25 of which in cannabis. And it's the same as in traditional and otherwise. It does take a business some years to mature up into a place. If we can get that competitive edge to where we are driving those days, whether those be high transaction or high dollar days.
Thank you.
But I could certainly get back with you with some more detail.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of our high-volume days too, depending on what's going on in the community, that Lights on Creston, we made sure we had like extra space because more people were driven to the store going around looking at the lights. So I would expect on days like Pride and the Dream Cruise that that would probably drive more people to our store as well. Just the events, community events seem to drive a lot of people to us.
Travis, would it be safe to say that our high-volume days are many of the same days that are high-volume for other retailers too?
Yeah, absolutely.
It may be though that you're looking at volume differently. So we just want to understand how you're looking at volume. And it may be different than everyone was looking at it six months ago.
Right, right. I mean, as City Manager correctly pointed out, this is an ever-changing landscape. And it's becoming a very challenging climate as a retailer, as a business operator.
Sure. Since your headquarters is here in Ferndale, do you have customers in southeast Michigan now? Or either as delivery customers or are all of your customers in Michigan on the west side?
To tell you the truth, we've been incredibly surprised at, I think it's probably due to some of the national attention or maybe the Cranes or the Detroit Free Press, but we have some, had some people come from Detroit to shop with us, which has been great. That is a five-hour round trip trip. I know it well. But, but no, we don't, we aren't active. We're not advertising. We're not marketing. We're not communicating in any way, shape or form. Obviously, our HQ is here in Ferndale or in the Ferndale, city of Ferndale. But, but no, not as of today.
And I think you told us that you're not planning to do deliveries through your store. Are you planning to offer deliveries through your headquarters or other facilities in the area? It's just literally a local storefront activity?
That's correct. It's a local storefront activity. Our current location is not a licensed facility.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, I might have taken cuts there.
That's okay. Mayor can do that anytime. So it's lovely. Mr. Mayor?
The, thank you very much for coming and the presentation. You know, and, you know, I appreciate you recognizing, you know, the work that we were doing with Sky Mint on talking about trying to be as friendly to the community around the, you know, your building and things like that. And so will we know who exactly, like can work with, say, Mr. Wilk and Joe to sort of talk about things like building a fence and, you know, if some privacy fences and how that might be able to work and how to, you know, help with any other, you know, something that may help with, you know, the funeral home type. The concerns John had had before regarding traffic that might cut through his parking lot.
Right, right.
And things like that. Like who will be like their main contact person?
You know, I am a jack of many, many trades, but I also wear a lot of hats in the organization. And not only do I oversee retail, I'm a retailer, but really the head of operations. So I oversee construction, marketing, merchandising, but also community activities.
That's right.
Alongside Julia, who is very active and a participant.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, this, I don't know, I'm slightly, I'm infringing on like sort of the conversation or the, like just sort of the branding type conversation because of trying to fit into the community. I mean, I don't think necess, you know, one of the things I know we put in our ordinance is really, you know, nothing like marijuana leaves or, you know, anything sort of depicting marijuana is allowed to be shown on the signage and things like that. So when, you know, so honestly, I have a little bit of a hard time with your icon because it is a little bit of a, you know, it it sort of doesn't fit the neighborhood brand as well. And, you know, it's sort of the colors, you know, what, so it's a difficult one. I mean, this is what I struggle a little bit with the design and things like that. And that really being something that's a big visual for the community. I think, you know, one of my concerns is I think it speaks a little bit too much to kids a little bit. And so I, I would hope, I don't know, I have a hard time with it being like a major part of your branding. I mean, I think the location is so key and with the other, with the design of the logo of Knox, I think could be good. And so I'll be honest, I have a hard time with that. I think it's especially having it out there a lot. It feels, it feels more like it's pushing the marijuana thing more than I think any of us were comfortable with when we sort of established the ordinance. And I don't know if that's, I don't know. I'm just gonna get that out there.
Commissioner, if I could ask, if we could go back to those slides, I think one of the things you'll notice is Knox, the actual image isn't as prevalent. Again, that particular, this sign here with the big case will no longer be there. That will be the community, that will be the community mural. And you'll notice on the front of the store, it actually isn't on the front of the store either. It's literally just the name.
Okay, good. Was there a dropdown of the circle that comes in the front or no?
I think it may have been on one of the signs, but I think we'd have no problem, and that one of the directional signs. And I think we'd have no problem eliminating it from the directional side. Now, it is above, I don't want to mislead you, it is above the rear awning, but it's pretty small. If you go back to that picture, you'll see it right there.
Okay.
And again, that's in the rear of the building and, yeah, you've got to be walking up to the store to see it.
Okay, so with the rear of the building, so I wanted to see, you know, is it possible, you know, as much beautifica, you know, you live in Ferndale, so you're very familiar with how the murals and things like that have helped transform, you know, alleyways and things like that into something that's much more appealing to residents and especially as things bump up against residential. And especially as things, um, bump up against residential commu-, uh, neighborhoods. The, um, you know, just having things, you know, even like just the big arrow with the Knox, I, I just think people don't need that. I don't think that's your most elegant.
It's not elegant, it's not artistic enough.
Right. So it could get into a mural space. No, and I appreciate you guys.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's another great point, I, and, and we are certainly open to collaboration, um, and, and idea generation, right? If, uh, if that needs or should or wants to become, uh, a, a part of the mural that our local artists would do in that some, same space.
Right.
That could become something more creative.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And I do think that as, you know, I think we all recognize that back entrance will probably be one of your, will probably be more of the main entrance. And so, I mean, I like that you started to really treat it that way, that it is very much, um, very much, um, a, a good thoughtful design. And something like that. The, the other thing is, you know, with the traffic concern and the parking concern, you know, the big thing with, I think, that signage that is coming in off of Woodward, that's on the south side of the building. I think it'll be very important to make sure that it's illuminated and things like that in a way. But also like no neon, neon is also, I think, one of our non-things that really can't be in the, the, be used as well.
We'll backlight it.
Okay.
It, it'll, it'll glow.
Um.
I've become a lighting expert as well.
Have you?
Yeah. Signage expert, yeah.
And, and I, I do believe that the Knox on that arrow is actually made to be illuminated too, because you, you had asked in, in previous meetings to make sure that we illuminated the signage. So I think that was one of the ways that we had looked at, at doing it.
Right, it needs, right, cause you just want it to be, you want people to be able to figure out the parking as easily as possible to help eliminate any driving around and looking. So, thank you.
This arrow though, I'm sorry, this is pointing to the door.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I, I do question whether we need to direct people to the door, or the door will be pretty enough.
Mm-hmm.
That once people are in the parking lot.
That's the thing is you can make that rear entrance pretty enough that it will make it, or other less, you know, that, this can be a beautification point versus it being a directional sign.
The issue is that the door is buried and it's, when you're driving in the alley, you're not going, you know, this is looking straight at the door. But when you're approaching maybe the direction, you're not gonna see the door.
Mm-hmm.
So really the challenge that they're trying to.
Yeah.
To solve is quickly providing wayfinding for people to orient themselves so they know where they're going. There's, there's, there's other ways to do it.
Yes.
You know, you can add, you know, a pergola, or you could do, you know, lighting that strings between the buildings.
Yes.
There's other ways of, of communicating without signage that, you know, this is the human place.
Yes.
And it'll draw people to that naturally without having to use the signage.
Oh, yeah.
I think the opportunity is to look at other ways that contribute.
Yes.
To the space, to contribute to, you know, really just kind of the attractiveness, uh, without using signs.
That's right. In fact, uh, we have about five or six different views, uh, to your point, uh, wayfinding. But whether they be architectural or design elements that we could certainly present, um, just to see what, you know.
Cause ultimately your goal is, uh, setting aside special events, people are in and out in ten minutes or five minutes or whatever.
Ideally.
It's not lingering.
Yeah, yeah, precisely.
Yes.
Yeah, less is more.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and then with this, now, at one point you were talking about this as a distribution center, right? Was that in an early, okay. All right. And then, um.
That wasn't the first.
Okay.
It was in the first draft of the application.
Okay, and then it's gone away?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And so it will not be a distribution center?
Absolutely not.
Okay, great. Um, the, you know, and, let's see. Uh, yeah, and I think that and the conflict resolution, you know, which Commissioner Smear had, had on, is, yeah, those are.
My last name is really a, a killer today, tonight.
I need some water. But, um, that's great. No, and I appreciate you guys being very open to, to listening to the discussion. Because, you know, while we can't, um, you know, you know, it is important, you know, we want you guys to be as, um, to, to fit into the community and everything as, as well as possible. And to, to make the impact, hopefully like a beautification one, as I know you guys have spoken about and, and things like that. While, you know, new businesses are, it's always hard.
Mm-hmm.
Because, um, but it's like, we appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll mention what I think I mentioned to Sky Mint, uh, most of the commentary that we receive, although it's not zero. It's very little about the fact that you're a marijuana store. It's about traffic, it's about what do we do with bikes, it's about are there people lingering outside? What does it look like at night? Is it a distraction? Is it noisy? Are you going to have noisy trash receptacles?
Right.
All of these things are the things that really concern people on any business that goes into town.
That's right, that's right.
So we just wanna make sure that you have these, uh, buttoned up in a way that, uh, whenever they come to a city commission meeting, we can explain it.
That's right, that's right. Well, um, with, uh, with our HQ being less than five minutes from there, I'm sure our store teams will hate that we're as, uh, ever-present to this business. Uh, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm meticulous, um, I'm the first one to pick up trash, if I see anything on a site, uh, to the chagrin of those that missed it before I got there. Um, but, um, but yeah, it's, um, look, I spent ten, ten years at Ralph Lauren, uh, for a reason. Uh, so, um, yeah, it's incredibly important to me as well. Um, in fact, uh, city of Creston, um, applauded us for getting trash bins, uh, where, without having to be asked. Um, aware of the, the litter that, that was taking place there, so, uh, we wanna be as well ahead of that as, as possible. Thank you.
One other thing I think, and I don't know if it's, I don't remember if it's on this site plan, is they were talking about, was there, um, a water, was it the water runoff?
The bio-swell.
Bio-swell thing?
Yeah.
In the parking lot thing?
It's on the site plan.
It is, okay, great.
And may I make one last comment? Um, you know, I'm, I was reading through the proposal that I got, and somewhere here it said twenty spaces. Um, provided onsite parking per the site plan dated one eleven twenty-two, and it came out to twenty spaces.
Yeah, is that, is that the current site plan or is that the one eleven twenty-two?
That was the one eleven twenty-two.
Yeah, so I, I think there was multiple iterations that came in front of this commission after that, and then the new site plan was the one that has twenty-six, so the one in the pack, I believe, should have.
So are you saying that the, of course, right, the one, but that was the same pla- site plan as Sky Mint? So where, were you suggesting initially less?
No, I, 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 I believe Sky Mint had twenty in January, if I'm following correctly, right, in one eleven twenty-two.
So when you sent us this, you missed the.
It, it, it may have possibly been.
And that was actually my comment, and I, and I don't want this to necessarily be, I, I, myself am just very detailed. And I do know that when we received the fir-, the first application and certainly this version, there were some Sky Mint's left in there. And there were some mistakes, and so I just do wanna bring that to the attention of, you know, certainly when I'm looking at things, I want to feel that whoever's presenting it, you know, put in the time to really look at it and to present accurate and correct information. And so it's just an overall comment that I had that, you know, the original one saying Sky Mint in all of these places and something like this. It just feels a little bit like, again, the attention wasn't put into, so that was just an overall comment.
Reason that, uh, we're here this evening, uh, presenting, whereas the other individual isn't, so.
And will she be involved, um, or will it?
Not at this point, not any longer.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, one more, back to the, to Hertz, like, what's the situation with Hertz, the, the Hertz rental car business? And, and if this gets approved, um, will Hertz still exist or?
No, it, it is, um, right now that, that property is under contract and, and we are under a contingent lease agreement with, with the, um, with the potential buyer of that property. Um, as, as far as we've been, we, we know that the Hertz lease is on a month-to-month lease at this time. Um, and, and if this gets approved, we, we will, you know, hopefully be moving in there and starting our, our construction, or well, our deconstruction and then our construction, uh, uh, very shortly thereafter.
Thank you.
There has been some discussion with the city of Ferndale about the Hertz site.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have gotten information from the applicant. Basically, it, it's been looked at that even with the leasing of the spaces from the Hertz site, there's still enough parking that the Hertz building can be used for other purposes. Um, the city of Ferndale is not gonna allow that building to be knocked down or the site to be cleared, um, it has to be something. Cause you can't have parking as a primary use of a site.
Oh.
So, uh, the parking can be leased to Knox, and there is enough parking left to support a reuse of the Hertz of the building.
Okay.
That exists on the site, uh, for another use that's not Hertz.
Okay.
And I think Ferndale will be happy with Hertz no longer being in operation, cause I know they've had issues with that. But, you know, that, that's kind of the state of play of where that site sits. And I've, we've been in contact with both city of Ferndale, the city of Ferndale attorney, Greg Neid, and the applicant about that, just making sure that that's.
Okay. So that's, so there'll be twenty-six spaces, but then some, then Hertz will still have some, or not, whoever will have other spaces there.
Well, the twenty-six spaces is.
Like ten along that wall?
Twenty-six spaces is the ten that's on the Hertz site.
Okay.
And then the remainder is on.
The sixteen on the other, okay.
And it's important that Knox meets our minimum parking requirement within the confines of their own site.
Okay.
So they need all of the, all of our ordinance requirements. The Hertz, the least ten spaces are bonus spaces or, well, for.
Okay.
For their, for our purposes, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, over and beyond what you've heard from us, is there anything that you need to know from us in order to be comfortable? You know, we want you to be, if we approve your application, we want you to be successful and.
Thank you.
And get moving.
Not at this time, uh, obviously look forward to opportunities to continue to communicate, uh, and participate in any fact-finding, uh, opportunities, uh, that you all may have of us. Um, and obviously, uh, we have your contact information and would love to continue the conversation, obviously, heading into the new year.
Yeah, but thank you so much for, for your time, we really do appreciate it. And, and I believe that, that we're gonna try and schedule some time for you to possibly come out to Grand Rapids and, and, and see our operations out there, correct? So we're, we're very much looking forward to that.
That's great. Are the, are the cash registers working again? I remember they were down on Friday. Oh, well, so, no, uh, and, and the debit transaction is, it's a national issue.
Oh, boy.
It's an industry-wide issue, so, uh, Visa, as, as you may have read, has cracked down, uh, on, uh, our partner, which was Dutchie. Uh, and so every, roughly forty percent of the entire industry, maybe more, was using Dutchie. Um, and, and so we've had to cease operations, which we've done, uh, and now we're looking at alternatives. Uh, but in the meantime, we're still accepting good American cash, so. Still a place, place for it.
Cool.
How was your weekend?
Think you know. Yeah.
Are you gonna open up for public comment, or this is just the end of the meeting?
Um, I, we had not planned to open for public comment, but they'll be back again.
Well, there's a few points I'd like to make so they could address before the next meeting, but if you don't wanna hear from us, I understand.
But we do want to hear from you, but hadn't planned on it tonight. Um, is it something that you, does, um, why don't we go ahead and let the, any of the public speak and then we'll go from there?
Thanks you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just have a few comments, and I appreciate the opportunity.
No problem.
And, um, I'm not sure about the bike path, is it gonna be in the alley or is it gonna be on Woodward? Do you, I mean, I don't know, and I think that does have an impact on the amount of traffic that's gonna be in the alley.
It's in, it's in the alley at that location.
Right, correct. The, the official bike path will be in the alley at this location.
And then I assume that someone has taken into consideration the safety issues with a lot more traffic that's going in there. And traffic is now not one way, but two ways on the alley. You're not gonna only have additional traffic from the marijuana location. You've got FedEx trucks, you got UPS trucks, and sometimes they stop in the middle of the alley, cause you can't get two vehicles by each other, and they just stop traffic. So I sure, I assume that's a consideration of yours.
Um, well, um.
Of somebody's.
I suppose it depends on how you define a lot more traffic. It is more, but it would be more if it was any business, so it's business and it will generate traffic.
Yeah, and I think there'll be a significant increase in traffic more than just a regular business with marijuana, with people coming and going. I think someone mentioned ten minutes in a facility.
That, that's why I, uh, have asked them to help us understand their, the number of customers we'll have, and then we'll be able to identify what that means for them.
And this will be especially acute during the marijuana holidays.
Could be.
Yes, and I can assure you, you know, that I have the, uh, the building in Ferndale, which will be well within two hundred feet of your Orwellian ordinance. That, uh, I will be impacted, and, and I do have cameras up, and I do have signs up. And I want the Knox people to know that if a patron parks in my lot, I will be very diligent in trying to make sure that that vehicle is towed.
May I make a comment? When we first started the conversation with Sky Mint, the alley and certainly the bike paths were a big conversation. Which is actually what started the conversation about the driveway and the additional parking. So if you go back to that original meeting, that was actually kind of, the original plan we had did not have that driveway in and out. It didn't have a usable, it wasn't, the, the traffic didn't flow as well, which is why we really pushed to have that driveway, to keep it.
And I think it's important to note, we had already approved Sky Mint.
Oh, I know that, yes.
But on plan, so I'm just curious to see how different their operation is from Sky Mint. Uh, so that we understand whether there were, are changes up or down that might make the story different.
Understood. So I understand now from hearing you folks that there will be a building left for Hertz's. Because Ferndale won't allow it to be raised and used simply for parking, so some of the allocated parking will have to be for that new business, no?
So the minimum requirement that they have all sits on the property in Pleasant Ridge. The additional ten parking spaces that reside in Ferndale, which are the Hertz lot.
Right.
Are, as Jim has said, pretty much bonus spots for us. We asked them to do it for us because we want it to be certain that at whatever occupancy or whatever number of customers they have, we're covered. And, um, that's, I think what we've got.
Okay, so I'm, and, and also importantly, the, the Hertz site has more than ten spaces.
Oh, that's right.
So the, the Hertz site can in, function independent of the ten spaces that are being leased to Knox.
Oh, that's right.
They have enough remaining parking spaces to meet minimum parking requirements for the building.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what that is, but it's in an email somewhere.
So the Hertz building that will become something else has enough spots.
Right.
Not including the ten that potentially Knox will be using, they have enough remaining spots to support the business.
So let me ask a question a different way then, had Knox not secured the Hertz location, would the city still have approved the marijuana license?
We had enough spots.
You did? Okay.
We did have enough spots. So those are, so those are bonus.
Okay.
Spots.
That's great. The, the other issue, and I've raised this in emails, and I know you're probably all tired of hearing from me. But this location with the Hertz parking will be operating in Ferndale as well as Pleasant Ridge. And I've raised the issue of whether Knox now needs to be licensed by Ferndale as well. And if they do, and, and I'd be happy to represent one of them, the existing, well, maybe we'll see each other in court. Because the existing licensees in Ferndale, I think there are six, and Ferndale has allowed it all their licenses. If I were representing one of the Ferndale locations, I would say it's in violation of the Ferndale ordinance.
They do not.
They do not what?
Violate.
They do not. In other words, they're okay to operate part of the location in Ferndale.
They are not operating the part of the location in Ferndale.
Well, they're using the parking.
Additional parking.
Yeah. So you don't consider that using the parking lot?
Yeah, I, I've had discussions with the Ferndale city attorney that Jim alluded to, and what Knox is proposing will not take any of the Ferndale marijuana licenses. They are not required to get any marijuana approval from Ferndale. And again, as long as the building is there and the lot in Ferndale is not used exclusively for parking and other purpose, it's legal.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, we'll see if, if one of the existing marijuana licensees in Ferndale decides to challenge that. Okay, I will see what happens, um.
All right, and just for the record, your name and address?
I'm sorry, Joe Papillion. I own, uh, the property located at Six Woodward Heights, which is in Pleasant Ridge. And the property right next door at one thirty-one East Oak Ridge, which is in Ferndale, which is in, well within two hundred feet of your ordinance, even though we're in Ferndale. And your ordinance doesn't count. And I own the house next door at one thirty-seven.
Is that the Orwellian part?
It is, it is, yeah, we're all equal, except Pleasant Ridge residents are more equal than others.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a comment or?
You, you heard all me.
I, okay.
Greetings, um, my name's Brian Bennett, I'm actually one of Joe's tenants, I live at one thirty-one East Oak Ridge. Um, I'm not really here on behalf of Knox or of my landlord, I'm here as a cannabis ad-, cannabis advocate. Um, my intent to speak to you today. I'm here as a cannabis ad, cannabis advocate. Um, my intent to speak to you today was to, one, tell you that I really think that you, um, dodged a bullet not having Skymint in, in this community. Um, I believe that Knox has a culture that is something that this community can really benefit from. Um, if you'd like to navigate back to their mission statement, um, I think that that really speaks heavily on what the cannabis industry is really striving to do. Um, I work for a cannabis-adjacent company called Ooze. It's a globally traded company, um, that has our products in multiple countries. What I would like to say, and what I would like to invite the council to consider, is to discontinue the use of, discontinue the use of the terms marijuana and transition to the use of cannabis. You saw everything on the proposal and the presentation that they put up here, that it's Knox cannabis. Most of the facilities that you'll see in the area are all cannabis facilities. Marijuana is, in my opinion, and has been classified recently as a racist term that was used in the 30s to persecute and be a prejudice term against people of color and minorities. So, I would just like to offer that, um, invitation to you to maybe change the rhetoric of the, the use of marijuana. Marijuana is part of the cannabis plant. Um, but with that being said, I really do firmly believe that you guys really did dodge a bullet from not, not having the other company in, in this area, and I do believe that this new tenant will be a very, very good representation of the culture that the cannabis community has to offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I think we're probably, uh, tied to one word based on the legal description in the state of Michigan, more than anything, although there's branding and other things that we say casually that might not need to be.
Yeah, and I would like to also let you know that the MRA, known as the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, has been, has changed its name to the Cannabis Regulatory Agency. So, it's no longer the MRA, and it is now the CRA. So, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the use of the word marijuana has been discontinued, and cannabis is, is now the more politically correct way of describing it as a ministry.
However, the state statute was still, has the word marijuana in there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready to go to the city manager report.
Um...
Thank you for coming. Thanks for your feedback.
Thank you, guys.
I grew up in the 60s, it was always marijuana.
It's many things.
What about weed? Can I just stick with weed?
Weed's fine. Cannabis is it.
No, I know, I actually, I, 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 no, I, I will...
The moss is marijuana, but like cannabis is the right word. All right, city manager's report.
Yes. Um, we've wrapped up leaf collection, things are settling down for the holidays.
Well, congratulations on leaf collection. That, it's like, nothing, no noise.
Right. It's, the day we end leaf collection is sort of like Christmas come early.
Congratulations.
Um, we're just, you know, I, I, I guess I could offer a rumination on, on why we can't build anything in this country anymore, as we struggle to get the Kensington Waterman project going. You know, I know this is something we've been talking about forever. And we're stuck in a process where, you know, we got a federal earmark for $650,000, but in order to get that money, we have to apply for a grant. And to apply for a grant, we have to do NEPA, Environmental Review, and historic, get SHPO State Historic, you know, Preservation, uh, Approval, and all of these other things, just to replace a waterman that's underground. It's really pretty frustrating, so, you know.
This is how six-month projects take three years.
Right, and that's why, yeah, we invented solar energy in this country, but we didn't build it here. You know, the rest of the world built it before we could figure it out. We can't build a subway system anymore, because it had, costs are three times higher than they are anywhere else, because we have to, all of these things that, you know, prevent us from doing anything. I don't know. It's, it's kind of interesting where we're at and why it's so frustrating to just replace a waterman.
Does it appear that we'll start in, uh, 2023 on Kensington?
Uh, that's the goal still. So, we're still working towards it, but it's just, it's frustrating, because you're moving at federal government bureaucracy speed.
And if that goalpost moves because of the bureaucracy, does our goalpost move on our, on our dates for getting things done?
No, all that happens is that, you know, are the next projects we have are just our locally funded ones, which we continue to try to, um, obtain approval for, um, from the state for funding. But, you know, if it comes down, we just, we design Oak Ridge, because that's next, and then we do that on its own allotted schedule. So, it doesn't change the rest of the project, it just Kensington keeps languishing. Um, so, I don't know. That's been frustrating. I've been thinking about it a lot lately. We used to just do things, but not anymore.
So, we should, sorry to interrupt the city manager's moment.
No, I'm done.
But, um, so, just letting residents know, it's like, we're working on it, and we'll see when the, um, we'll, it's a wait-and-see because of bureaucracy.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Because we have to do seven things in order to be able to apply for a grant that we're already approved for.
Okay.
Well, that cleared the room.
Yeah, I know, right? Move to adjourn.
Well, for those of you that are left, I wish everyone a happy holiday if you're watching or you catch this later. It's been, um, it's been a great year here in Pleasant Ridge. Um, I'm very thankful for the staff and all the help from the rest of the city commission. Whatever holiday you celebrate, have a good one, uh, open up the wine cabinet, whatever you do, and have a good one. I think I'll adjourn the meeting. Any other comments before I, all right, I'll, a motion, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second? All right, the meeting's over.
Thanks.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.